I will now call to order the regular city council meeting of October 23, 2023. Members of the public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access to the meeting is also available by telephone by using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda. Meetings are broadcast on Channel 8 for Comcast and Xfinity subscribers and on the city's YouTube channel online. Joanna, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy will be absent. Mayor Protem Lukman-Hiromasa?
Here.
Councilmember Long?
Here.
Councilmember Hadameo? Councilmember Kondo?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Manager Guyer, are there any responses to resident inquiries?
Yes, Mayor, Protem, and council, I have one update to share with council this evening regarding the work being done on the 112th ditch roadway project. So as I've shared in the past, I'm going to go ahead and read the email updates that I'm providing to residents, so just bear with me. Mile High Flood District's contractor has completed the vegetation removal within the ditch. As of last week, their crews will continue working on removing sediment and cutting a low-flow pilot channel throughout the corridor. They will also be repairing some severely eroded embankment segments with soil rip wrap to prevent further migration of the ditch embankments towards the northern properties. They anticipate completing this work within the next two weeks as they have added some additional areas to their original scope of work with the contractor. The contractor started their work last Tuesday, and they're making good progress. And the Mile High Flood District study with Wright Water Engineers is progressing as expected. The project team will be meeting next week to discuss preliminary results of the hydrology component of the study. Over the next three weeks, the residents might notice that Mile High Flood District surveying consultant will be present along 112th Avenue. They will be collecting utility information and survey data along the ditch and storm sewer network. This survey information will be used to analyze the hydraulics of the ditch and the storm sewer overall. The Mile High Flood District team is committed to advancing this study as quickly as possible, and they're currently tracking on schedule to have preliminary recommendations to share with the city by mid-December. As a reminder, we have an upcoming 112th ditch workshop scheduled for Thursday, November 16th. I included a copy of the postcard. If this date does not work for you, please reach out to me, and we'll get another time scheduled for you to meet with Mile High Flood District. Previously, I indicated that the postcards would have, would be mailed out. Last week, the postcards will be mailed out to homes late this week. And so that is the update for the progress being made on 112th ditch. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Um, so the cards that went out, do they go to all the neighbors on 112th? Or just where we're having the issue?
Cards have not gone out yet.
But when they do?
They will not be mailed to all residents in the area. They'll be mailed to residents that are immediately adjacent to south of 112th and then north of 112th, north of the ditch.
Okay.
All the way over to east of Irma, to the edge of where the commuter rail starts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? No? Thank you. Okay. Very excited for the next portion of our meeting. We have Kate Field from the Youth Commission. She is coming forward to interview with council, so please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Youth Commission. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Kate File. I'm a 10th grader at Stargate School, and I really want to be on this commission because I really want to contribute and help bring ideas to the table for things like fundraisers and like community events.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Kate? Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you for volunteering, first of all. I had a few questions just looking over some of your responses. It looks like you're potentially applying for an indoor pool?
Yeah.
Position, is that with Northland or a different municipality?
So currently, I am applying for a position that's closer to my house, so it's in Broomfield, but I'm also considering of applying for a position here for an indoor pool as well. So I've been considering that this week.
Gotcha. So that was the softball question. I'm going to ask you a little bit harder question, and I hope you can kind of contemplate and give some preliminary thoughts. So obviously, the pandemic caused a lot of students to kind of fall out of the system, so to speak. And the numbers are staggering. I think across the United States, 14 million children did not return to school. That's a lot. And so that means there are a lot of kids that are just not back in school. I was wondering if you have any particular thoughts about that? It seems like it's almost like a lost generation. How do you, what, do you have any ideas about how to reengage?
Yeah.
Children of that age group?
Yeah, so I think children of that age group obviously went through a very rough time during COVID. I mean, we were stuck at home, and we were kind of isolated in a way, and a lot of people only had their like devices and screens. And from like scientific discovery, we've known that too much like screen time can affect your mental health. And so I think that some people have really struggled with their mental health, especially after COVID, even if they weren't struggling before COVID. They've, a lot of them have experienced trials throughout this period of like getting back to the normal and stuff. So I think that we could really help that generation and that group of people by really showing them that we care about them, that we accept them, and that we would love them to have them back in the community and to really show our support for them.
Great, thank you. Very, very thoughtful answer, and thank you again for coming forward.
Kate, I have a bunch more questions for you. There's lots of hands up. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Protem. Hi, Kate. I'm over here on the screen, so I'm saying my baby. If you hear the disembodied voice, that's me. Thank you so much for applying. I love to see youth engagement and civics in our government. Really appreciate that. And I loved your enthusiasm about sort of event planning and fundraising. I would love to hear some of your ideas if you don't mind sharing.
Yeah, so I think that just really, maybe even if it's like surveys that we give out to the public or like to our specific age group, to really bring in what and see what our age group is interested about. And then off that, we can build, we can build ideas and thought processes of what to incorporate their interests into our fundraisers so it's more like appealing to the audience that we are trying to communicate to.
Awesome. Thanks so much, and thanks again for applying.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Ms. Kate. There's some great answers on here, and thank you for coming forward. And I just want to ask you about one of them. It's into the area of what impact do you think the youth of your age can have in our city? And you said teenagers like yourself can have a significant impact, bringing fresh ideas and advocacy for important causes. And so while you've got the ear of council, I'm just kind of curious what some of those ideas would be.
Yeah, so I think that, um, I think that we as a generation do have a lot of developing ideas, and we really, I think, especially for me, I really like to advocate for helping people out and really accepting people for who they are. And I think that if we have an influence from the younger generation, we can also have a really big impact on the bigger decisions being made in our community, and I think that could be really beneficial.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kate.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Hello, good evening. Ms. File? You're very poised. I'm very impressed, thank you. I have granddaughters, one junior and one a senior in high school, so I try to relate to them as best I can. Generation gap, as I'm sure you appreciate with your grandparents. The question I always ask them is, where do you think you're going to go from here? What's your career goal? Is, I know it might be too soon to ask, but I just thought I might ask that question.
Yeah, so I have really put a lot of thought into this. Even though I'm young, I still have a whole big future ahead of me, and I really value the importance of education. I really value it because with education, you can really do anything. For my plans for my future, I plan on going to college. I know this is not for everyone, and that's completely okay. I plan on going to college, and I plan on, hopefully, my dream right now is to be a dentist or like in the dentistry field. And I am even doing some international medical work in other countries to help the less unfortunate really receive that care. For example, last year, I went with my dad, who is a doctor, to Puerto Rico, and I certified CPR to a whole neighborhood of people, and they were so, so grateful because it would help them. And this year, I am planning on going to the Dominican Republic and helping kids learn how to brush their teeth and giving out them supplies and stuff. So I have a really big passion for helping the less fortunate. I also have a really big passion in education and going as far as I can.
Well, thank you for that response. It's very articulate.
Thank you.
You happened to hit me straight in the eyes because I'm a healthcare career person myself.
That's awesome, yeah.
A little long in the tooth and long gone, but congratulations on your goals. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You bet.
Councilmember Brown?
I want to thank you for coming forward. I think that Mayor Protem knows that the Youth Commission is very near and dear to my heart, and I think from reading your responses, you're going to make a great new addition to the team.
Thank you very much.
Have you been coming to the meetings prior to this?
Yes, I went, I've been to one meeting, and that was my first meeting. I had my interview and stuff, so.
Okay, that was the interview you had your? Well, I hope that you're really excited.
I am really excited.
And I think that you guys are doing wonderful things. I've picked on people sometimes who stepped out of order, but I think you're really going to like doing it, and it's going to help you fulfill your goals even more.
Thank you so much for that advice.
Any other questions?
Well, Kate, it was a pleasure to meet you. I actually had the good fortune of being in that meeting when you had your initial interview as the liaison to the Youth Commission. And I think everyone said it, you're just so well-poised and eloquent, and you really, you know, know where you're going. I think you're going to be an absolutely fantastic addition to the Youth Commission. There's no doubt about that. I love the fact that you had helped out in Puerto Rico, being from Puerto Rico myself and having graduated high school there. I've seen just how bad the conditions are in some areas, and I've also been to the Dominican Republic, and that's even worse in some areas. So good for you. I think that's really, you know, really amazing that you're so young and, you know, just so in tune with what's going on in the world. So thank you so much for volunteering.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
I think that's all the questions we have.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
We have two proclamations. Will council please step down from the dais and join me? Testing? It's not? Okay. Our first proclamation is for National Arts and Humanities Month, and I would love to welcome Jill Parsons, President of the Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation, to accept the award. Accept the proclamation.
Great.
Whereas, October is National Arts and Humanities Month, a collective recognition of the importance of culture in America; and whereas, this special observance focuses on equitable access to the arts at local, state, and national levels, encourages individuals, organizations, and diverse communities to participate in the arts, allows governments and businesses to show their support of the arts, and raises public awareness about the positive impact of the arts and humanities in our communities and lives; and whereas, the arts are a national asset and should be available everywhere to everyone; and whereas, the city of Northland is fortunate to partner with the Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation, which sponsors affordable, quality arts programs and performances at the Parsons Theater, in city parks and schools; and whereas, National Arts and Humanities Month is an opportunity for everybody, everyone, to help change public perception and promote the crucial role of the arts and humanities in promoting individual well-being, addressing trauma, connecting cultures, highlighting inequities, and making our communities healthier and stronger. Now therefore, I, Shannon Lukman-Hiromasa, Mayor Protem of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Northland, and call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the arts and culture, and to specifically encourage greater participation by all community members in arts and humanities programs dated at Northland, Colorado, this 23rd day of October 2023. Would you like to say a few words?
I wanted to take just a moment to thank the continued support of Northland City Council. The Arts and Humanities Foundation couldn't do what we do if we didn't have your support, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is in condemnation of antisemitism in all forms of hate. We do not have anyone here to accept this, so afterwards, council is welcome to say any words if they wish. Whereas, Northland condemns all forms of hateful behavior based on race, color, national origin, ancestry, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, or religion, including antisemitism; and whereas, antisemitism remains a persistent, pervasive, and disturbing problem in contemporary American society. It seeks to divide Americans and Coloradans from one another, erodes trust in institutions and government, instills fear in our communities, and undermines freedom and democracy. And whereas, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance has developed the following definition of antisemitism. Antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed towards Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property, toward Jewish community institutions and religious facilities. And whereas, we are currently witnessing a humanitarian crisis. People are attempting to bury their loved ones as they themselves live in a state of constant fear for their own lives. Outside of the Middle East, we have seen how this violence has given rise to division and acts of hatred and violence directed towards both Jewish and Muslim communities. And whereas, for many, the difficulties of these weeks have felt like the continuation of a seemingly ever-present pain. Thousands of innocent Israeli and Palestinian civilians, citizens are suffering and grieving, both overseas and at home. Jewish and Muslim Americans are feeling unsafe in their own skin, and the FBI has reported an increase of hateful rhetoric. People everywhere, of every faith and background, need healing, support, understanding, and love. No person, child, or family should ever have to endure this level of fear and violence. And whereas, the conflict in Israel and Gaza is indicative of a worldwide issue that touches upon us locally. We hold out hope for peace and safety to one day become the reality of this region. We must continue to remain forever vigilant against hatred, persecution, and terrorism, and we will not let the rise in hate incidents that we see online across the country and across the world take root here at home. And whereas, an informed and unified dignity, unified community is the best defense against hate. We believe in the fundamental dignity of every human life, and this is a reminder to all listening that the city of Northland does not support any form of antisemitism or hateful behavior. Now therefore, I, Shannon Lukman-Hiromasa, Mayor Protem of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim this condemnation of antisemitism in all forms of hate in the city of Northland and urge community members to speak up against hateful behavior as soon as it is witnessed so that we may create a more just, peaceful, and inclusive society for everyone dated at Northland, Colorado, this 23rd day of October 2023. Is there anyone on the dais that would like to speak? Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. Yes, this has been on my mind, and I just wanted to appreciate my colleagues here who have agreed to, for this proclamation. I want people to remember Samantha Wool from Michigan who was stabbed to death outside a synagogue recently. And also, at the other end of the spectrum, we had a six-year-old Palestinian-American boy killed recently in the Chicago area. And I just wanted to point out that terrorism is not about achieving peace or solving any kind of a problem. It is just creates more violence. And we have to all be really careful with the words we use, the things we say, especially if you're in the public eye. We want a world that's more peaceful and less hate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Before I start, I just want to say I hope I can maintain my composure. One of our very good friends lost his 20-year-old son at the celebration at the kibbutz. I was raised in a predominantly Jewish community. I was a minority Gentile. We were so much, we're so close, and we still are. So this proclamation strikes near and dear to my heart. I'm very grateful for everyone who drafted the kind words. They're really spot on, and I can only hope and pray that we can find a way to end this hate. Thank you.
You made me tear up. Very, very sorry for your friend's loss. I've been to Israel many times. The Starlight teaches Israeli and made many friends there and seen the community and the people there. So this is absolutely tragic, and I know we all feel this, so.
Next up, we have our amazing Youth Commission. So change of the feeling here. We have our amazing Youth Commissioners Alex Sandu and Suyash Shrestha will present the update to council. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Glad to see you both again.
Well, first of all, good evening, council. Thank you so much for sharing those kind words about our community and sharing those experiences. They were very impactful, and I'm full in support of them. We would like to, my name is Suyash Shrestha once again, currently serving as the Vice President of the North Commission, Northland Youth Commission, and currently joined by Alex Sandu, the Treasurer of the Northland Youth Commission, who will be diving deeper into our community engagement.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Alex.
Welcome back.
Hi. Sorry, sorry. As some of you may know, as the Youth Commission, we were off for the summer, thankfully. We, so the majority of what we did over the summer was community engagement or volunteer events. Some of this you may know as the State of the City or the groundbreaking event, which both had rained, so not going to go so well for speeches. But following that, we did the Pride events as well as planting some flowers in the EBI rains, as well as going to the volunteer appreciation event. With this, we hope to continue doing volunteer events, hopefully organizing some ourselves. And I'd like to pass it on to Suyash.
Yeah, so looking forward, we have tons of new events and grassroots like movements going on within the Northland Youth Commission that we're super excited about. A big thing is we're looking into further recruiting new Northland Youth Commission members. As you can see, as a result today, we have Kate Field, who is happy to join us, and we have a couple more interviews lined up within the prospective months. We will also be coordinating events within the coming months on actually helping inform Northland youth and also surrounding community members on Northland Youth Commission and its body of work, its mission, and kind of what it hopes to accomplish within the next year. In addition, we also are going forward with a youth addiction poster contest. This is going to be a grand scheme event where we'll be working on a youth-facing kind of event and movement where students from across the Adams 12 Five-Star School District will be able to submit pieces of work that they feel is representative of youth addiction in their community. Members that are, there will be three winners of this contest, and they will be pretty much awarded for their support, and there'll be other recognition for those winners as well. Lastly, we are working on also a grassroots effort for fundraising within the Children's Hospital in partnership with the Children's Hospital North Campus specifically, where we'll be raising funds for specifically, for specifically toys and also books for the patients at that campus. This will be during a flick and flow event, which is will be when we'll be showing a movie and also selling concessions during November 17th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we'll be happy to see you guys there. But yeah, that is a lot of the work that we're going, that's going on with the Northland Youth Commission, and we're really excited to be doing a lot of these hands-on, really engaged pieces with our community right now. Thank you.
Looks like we have some questions for you. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you for presenting. First of all, I feel like this is an opportunity.
Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, if it's something.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Kondo.
First of all, thanks for coming in front of us. You know, the one thing I want to share with you, just for your general awareness, not trying to provide direction, but I would like to encourage you to think a little bit broader because about three months ago, I did a ride-along, three, two months ago. It was a Saturday afternoon, and it was with Officer Legg, and we went over to the Don and Nemo Skate Park. And there was about, oh, I would say 10 or 12 children there. One was a 10-year-old child who was there at the park because he said his mom was stoned and his dad was drunk out of his mind. And it just, it really, I know, you're looking like, oh my God. I felt that when I saw that, witnessed firsthand, I mean, these are kids that I don't think have fallen into a negative sphere of influence, but they are on the cusp of about ready to do that if somebody with malintent comes along. So then I'm thinking to myself, and the reason why I asked Ms. File the question, you know, about the lost generation, is I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, are these kids, they just kind of fell out of the system, if you will? They're not going to school? They're not having a positive sort of mentor or role model in their lives if it's not their parents? their parents? So I feel like that is a big need. And I can't solve that problem. I am three generations away from that, two, two generations. But I'm thinking to myself, the youth commission, you are so much closer. You can identify with the thinking and the mindset of young people who are teen, pre-teen, teens. So I would encourage you to kind of think about that. I'm more than happy to share a little bit more anecdote, but I don't want to bore the public. I think I've talked about this about three or four times.
Yeah.
But it struck me, and I'm thinking to myself, when you look at the demographics from Adams County, people under the age of 19 make up 20% of Northland's population. That's one out of five people. We need to start figuring out how to take care and pay attention to this group because these are the future. These people, these children are our future, and if we're not taking care of them, the future is not going to look so good.
Definitely, yeah. Thank you so much for voicing that concern. The youth commission has recently acknowledged that issue, and we're currently looking into the feasibility of implementing such programs. A huge role of the Northland Youth Commission itself is helping provide that strategy and insight for those parks and rec programs, and I really appreciate you kind of hands-on giving those statistics and also helping voice that concern. So we'll definitely go back and look into that issue.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, just thank you so much for all that you do. And then I also just, I would be remiss if I didn't speak on behalf of the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board. Thank you for the collaboration that we've had with your youth commission, and we look forward to more, doing more in the future.
Of course, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the grace that I needed, and thank you for carrying on when I couldn't. It is amazing to me how intelligent and how loving and caring this group is. But you helped me in so many other ways too, by just checking up on me to make sure that I'm okay. And I know that you guys are going to do a fabulous job with the, with the posters and everywhere you take this, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for following through with that and letting this voice that I won't have at a council level anymore in November be heard and continue to be heard. I'm so proud of you, and I am proud of the entire group. Don't get this wrong, but I am so proud of you from the moment I first, I first met you and we started talking about this subject and your awareness of the issues and helping me ground myself and figure out what direction I was going in. He helped me more than any of the adults that I spoke with at, you know, different, sorry, different events or different avenues that I went on. You've been fabulous. He checks on me every couple weeks because I haven't been doing too good, and he just, your parents did a fabulous job raising you. And I thank God that I got to meet you while I was on council.
Thank you. We would like to appreciate your efforts and also helping organize this matter because if we didn't have council support, we would not be able to reach this point. And I feel like, and as a Northland Youth Commission as a whole, we've been able to reach this point because of you, and we really support all the work that you've done in the past for substance abuse and substance abuse prevention and different educational tactics. So thank you so much, and we hope to carry on this type of mission and public health kind of events and strategy further on into the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns, did you have your hand up? I think she's, she might be feeding baby. Let's all her hand go up, and then it's not anymore. Okay, she's just waving her hand. I think she's occupied.
Yeah, sorry, we're burping and spitting up, so.
Okay.
But thank you. Thank you all for all that you do.
Take care of the baby.
Thank you so much.
Wait, hold on. Don't you leave yet. I just want to say thank you to both of you, Alex and Suyash. You guys are amazing. Councilmember Brown did have a lot to do with that addiction project. And when I first came on council, she was liaison, and then she asked me, she said, I think you'll be a great liaison, and it's the best thing. Thank you for that recommendation because it's truly incredible to see how this group has grown. You are all incredible, and it's all been said, so just keep doing the work, keep doing the good work. And I know you are addressing some of the issues Councilmember Condolee already talked about because we've had those discussions in the meeting, so you're on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for being here, guys. Great job. Moving into public invited to be heard, this is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. Joanna, is there anyone signed up to speak to council tonight?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Two people signed up in advance. The first one on the list is Mark Bromley.
Thank you. Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
Well, hello, Northland. I'm Mark Bromley, from mayor for Northland, address on file with the city. I'm from Ward Three. And to clear up some dishonesty from the council last time I was here, I would like to point out that all my information in my speeches and what I talk about come from current events and council activities. Everything I speak of is the truth from my perspective and as a lifelong resident indigenous to this community and my interpretations of what I understand and witnessed by dysfunctional members of the city and the council. My views are fully protected by the First Amendment rights under the U.S. Constitution and Council House rules to be respectful of others, which I always am. Now, don't go out and go get another ambulance-chasing lawyer from California to make legal threats or tyranny of you four former council members who are careless, belligerent in doing intimidation and bullying will not do. I will not tolerate your criminal abusive use of city council aimed to harm me. I recommend to the council you accept diversity and give me inclusivity by voting for Mark Bromley to be the better future of Northland, to build a kinder council. It's why I'm running. It's why I'm here. This George Floyd of Northland is tired of the hate and the animosity aimed at the citizens of Northland by this awfulness of current, currently on the council. I am not alone. I am the voice of many. Now, back in September of 2023, City Council had a study session. In that study session, there was a slide titled number 35 and number 36 that stated some businesses' employees of the Washington Point Shopping Area may be inadvertently perpetrating a negative image of Northland. That's a very Karen meme trope, KMT statement by the city representative. None of you on council corrected the nonsense. Then the city council doubled down on the hate and falsely claiming that the council is owed for lording over the COVID response that was tyrannical and somewhat oppressive. No one owes a darn thing to city council. You, the city and council, have been paid for that poorly handled service by the taxpayers. Don't like doing your job, you can quit. Northland will get some more competent person, such as myself, to do the job as a better mayor. You on the council are all replaceable, and most of the council got here by appointment or uncontested election, using a process of oppression and tyranny to chase off your predecessors or other competitors. Many of you are here by unconstitutional means of dirty politics and hateful intentions to harm the innocent of this community. Like the four counts of religious persecution aimed at Christians by this council, that some Democrats running in District 12 called antisemitic in a flyer they sent out just recently. Christians cannot be antisemitic because we read from the same Bible and follow the same God. Please, council and Democrats, stop your hate and persecution of others in Northland with your campaign materials, clean up your politics, and stop hating the citizens of the community. It's why I'm running for mayor, because of the hate crimes committed by the terrible acts by city council. If this hate on the city council has left me alone to live in peace, I would not be here venting frustration because of hate by this council. Now I want the toxic council ended, the hate gone, and the KMT Kangaroo Court to never happen. I want to fix mine, my families, and my citizens of Northland, Northland. That is why I keep coming to these meetings, to fix my city of Northland. Hate creates hate, but it's also true that love creates love. And so show me the love, vote Mark Bromley, and love returns to Northland. Thank you, city council, for taking this time to listen to me. And if you're wondering where that antisemitic comment was made, it was actually a flyer that was sent out by some people in the Democrat Party for the Adams District 12 School Board members, and those are false accusations being named at Christians within our community. And I just wanted to point that out because we shouldn't have those kind of problems within our community at all. We shouldn't have dirty politics, and we shouldn't have any of that.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Bromley.
Thank you very much, and you all have a great day.
The second person on the list is Tom Lampo.
Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council. Welcome, Tom.
Hello. Tom Lampo, 3951 Jackson Way. It's good to be back in front of Northland. It's an exciting time to be alive and a part of what is taking place. Want to encourage everyone to view our world through a biblical point of view and also to look for alternative media for a different perspective on the headlines and other news. So tonight, I'm here to pray for the city and its people. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus Christ's holy name, we invite you here to the city of Northland. Thank you for being here. Guide us in all we do. You are ruler of all, including our city. It states in 1 Timothy 6:15b, "God, the blessed and only ruler, the king of kings and lord of lords. No one is above you; no one tells you what to do. No one can force your hand. Your decisions are final. You work all things out for your glory." We are being affected by the spiritual battle that wages on. Your victory is already secured. No one has defeated you yet, and no one will defeat you in the future. Now we wait on you to complete your work. But until that time, our lives are impacted. Be here for us as you were with the Israelites as they left Goshen. The Israelites saw the Egyptian army approaching them. They were terrified and started complaining to Moses. In Exodus 14, 13 through 14, it states, "Moses answered the people, 'Do not be afraid; stand firm, and you will see the deliverance the Lord will bring you today. The Egyptians you see today, you will never see again. The Lord will fight for you. You need only to be still.'" And so it is for us today. We see the evil all around us. We know we need change, but this world is stacked against us. We don't have the financial resources. The media isn't on our side. Our social influence isn't large enough. Our governments have their own agendas. We are almost powerless, except we have you, the undefeated God with everlasting love. And what you give us is greater than what the enemy has. In 1 John 4, 4 through 6, it states, "You, dear children, are from God and have overcome them, because the one who is in you is greater than the one who is in the world. They are from the world and therefore speak from the viewpoint of the world, and the world listens to them. We are from God, and whoever knows God listens to us, but whoever is not from God does not listen to us. This is how we recognize the spirit of truth and the spirit of falsehood. You are in us. With you, we have overcome the evil that surrounds us. We are victorious because of you. Continue to wage war on the evil one for us. Continue to fight for us, because without you, there isn't hope, and we are, and we are without a future. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, guys. You have a nice one.
Have a great week.
Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council? You may press star six to unmute yourself at this time. Does not look like we have anyone. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have a chance to sign up and would like to speak to council? If so, please come forward, state your name and address or ward, and provide your comments to council. Looks like no one. Great, moving on to communications. Let's see, first up, we have council member Walker.
Thank you. I just want to thank Tom Lampo for his kind words and his prayers, as they're always welcome here. Also want to give a thank you to Kent and his team, along with the planning commission and all those who were involved with the strapping of Fox Run that is now complete. I know it was a long process, waiting for C-Dot dragging their feet to get that done. And so I look forward to it as another passive measure that we took to help slow down and make Fox Run safer, but I also look forward and will continue to push for this city for more tangible measures to help make our streets safer, and I will continue to fight for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns?
Can we circle back to me?
Yes.
I'm still feeding Ellie. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Councilmember Brown?
I attended the business appreciation event, and it's so obvious when talking to all the business owners how much they enjoy their businesses here in Northland and how much they appreciate the support that they get from not only our residents but from city council and helping them in many ways that we do. It's one of my favorite events because I actually get to intermingle with the business owners, and it's really nice to hear that they're noticing what we do. They appreciate what they do, and they are committed to staying in Northland. So I would like to thank council member Walker for helping me up the stairs again this year, and the owner of Lizzy's for helping me down the ramp this year. That was so sweet for them to come out like that. So that's really all I have from this last week.
Thank you. Councilmember Hadamiyo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Excuse me. On October 12th, I attended the SCFD Award at Adams County Regional Park. That's the Scientific Cultural Facilities District, and you probably know him back in the day as the organization with the polar bears, but now they have more colorful bear now. So anyway, they're still funding the arts since 1990, so very proud to be representing Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation and also Chicano Humanities Arts Council. So I attended that, and I want to thank Northland Arts and Jill Parsons, who was here, former council member and mentor of mine since I've been on Northland Arts, Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation since 2016, kind of helped me see myself here in this position. So as a younger people, you know, we talk about envisioning yourself where you want to be, you know, coming to these meetings and seeing people that I know in the community being in this, in this seat, such as Joyce Downing, former mayor. You know, you can see yourself and you can become that. So that's on the, on the note of the, the youth commission, so they're doing great. Really proud of them. And also, since we're talking about Northland Arts, or I'm talking about Northland Arts, you can still support, support the art that's going to be installed at the new city hall. So you can donate, you can go to northlandarts.org, or you can call Michael Stricker at 303 450-8727, and he can help you get your name on a plaque there at the new city hall. Other than that, I'd like to just acknowledge the efforts that have been done to fix the ditch along 112th Avenue. I saw a lot of work being done when I go to the park there, Larson Glen Park. So there's, there's work being done, and I'm really happy to see it so we can really fix that issue that we've, want to make the, want to make that right, and we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that reminder because I would like to donate.
Okay, great. Here's, here's a flyer. Got a QR code to make it real easy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, I was kind of busy last weekend. I know not, some people haven't mentioned this, but on October 11th, we did have our candidate forum. So I just want to mention to residents, if you haven't seen that, it is available to see on YouTube and also on the city website. And then I also want to encourage everyone to vote because they'll be getting, if you haven't already gotten your ballot, you'll be getting it soon. So it's very important to participate in your civic duty by voting. October 13th, I went to Denver to speak to the interim ozone committee, urging them to act more quickly to improve our air quality. That was part of Colorado Communities for Climate Action. And then on October 14th, we had our Ward Three meeting, and my fellow council member will report more out on that. The business appreciation event that council member Brown mentioned was wonderful. And it really, it is, it's, at every one of these kind of events, we always hear back from businesses thanking us, thanking the city of Northland for our health. businesses thanking us, thanking the city of Northglenn for our help and support. And so, I feel like we're, you know, we know we're doing a good job when we hear that back. October 18th, let's see, I did participate in a feasibility study for the area, the park, the Stonehocker Park. So we're just kind of doing some exploratory discussions around that. And I wasn't able, I was busy, so I wasn't able to attend. There was an event right outside on the festival lawn on that day by Adams County in their Love My Air program, celebrating the fact that they put up two more, no, three more substations that monitor air quality. And if you don't know, Northglenn has two of them already. So if you want to know more about how the air is in Northglenn, you can always go to the city website and check that out. And then on October 19th, I was down in Denver again, but this time at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment Building. This is again with CC4CA, to speak to the Air Quality Control Commission about the rules that they are making to help achieve the state's energy goals. And then, just before our meeting today, many of us got to walk through the construction site of our new City Hall, and that was very exciting and interesting, and it's going to be so much fun to see that all the way done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. So, first of all, a lot happening. And of course, you and I participated in Congressional District Eight panels to interview young men and women contemplating applying to the service academies. And so that was for Naval Academy, where I come from, West Point, Air Force Academy, and Merchant Marine. And I will tell you, it was, for me personally, it was very, how should I say this? I think it reaffirms my faith in the youth of this country, that you have people that are so smart, so brilliant, so talented, and have displayed leadership at a very early age, wanting to go to our nation's service academy. So, thank you, Mayor Protam, for joining me on that journey. I know I kind of signed you up for that. I thought it was a great opportunity to meet a bunch of fine young people. And so, that was a nice event. Actually, I did two weekends of it, so. We did have the Ward Three Neighborhood Meeting, if you will, and that was on the 14th, same day. We had about 15 to 20 people, and topics that were covered are pretty much in the connection. But we did talk a little bit, things that were seasonally appropriate in regards to how to take care of your yard waste, throwing away mattresses, recycling. And I do want to thank staff. I think we had at least five or six staff members there presenting. And they have way more knowledge than neither Dr. Goff or myself. So, you know, clearly, I'm not able to answer a lot of questions, especially about emerald tree bores, emerald ash tree bores. But the fact of the matter is, you know, this is a city that cares about sustainability, as you haven't noticed. And we try to get that information out to our residents. I think we also received around seven or eight different feedback pieces of areas that we could work on. And so I do want to thank the residents who came and were willing to fill out one of the tear slips with their name and number and their issues, so we could follow up with them directly. I did have a couple of other committee assignment meetings and things of that nature, but I do want to just remind the days that the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council just sent over a draft IGA to renew our triannual membership, which I would strongly recommend that we do that. It's really an information nexus for us to be able to stay on top of what's going on at Rocky Flats, especially the long-term monitoring prospects and things of that nature. I am very much confident, given my nuclear background, that all the measures that are being taken, all the engineering controls are sufficient, and that the city is not in any risk or hazard. Lastly, I probably did pose a hazard to the city in Safe Streets Halloween, because I just remember last year handing out more candy than I ever handed out in my lifetime. So I'm pretty sure there are a lot of residents that really hate me for giving their kids sugar highs that will last for the next three months. But kudos again to Northglenn Police Department. Kudos also to Northglenn High School that had multiple booths. I don't know who won, actually. I don't know, Chief, if you can announce that, or...
I don't think they announced it. I would do it the next council meeting.
Gotcha.
I'd vote for you.
It was a struggle in terms of the costume. I mean, like I said, I just, just coming from the academy nomination meeting, so I just put on a fedora hat and tried to act like Indiana Jones, a very bad one at that. But again, kudos, well done on that. Thank you, Chief. That's all I have, ma'am.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Walker, first off, for giving me the Israeli United States flag. It was very generous. And I want to thank again all those folks that put their real heart and soul into some really spirited statements, which I sincerely appreciate. I will pass this on to my friends in Israel who are taking baby steps in their recovery, volunteering as they naturally would to help bring back that country's freedom and independence. And I'm going to apologize ahead of time. This is a difficult meeting for me to be at, because I'm on an emotional roller coaster sharing several things, not the least of which is this. But at the awards dinner, I was very serendipitous that I was able to, at the business awards, give an award to my dentist for his longevity. It was a coincidence, but we really enjoyed it. His father was there too, and he was my first dentist that I had prior to the son taking over. So that was really heartfelt, and I think I agree with Councilmember Brown. It was really a, really a well-said, well-visited conversation we had. Shannon Lucman-Hiramosa, Mayor Protam and I will have our Ward Four meeting this Thursday, October 26th, at the Justice Center at 6:00 p.m. As a reminder, I know that staff will be there helping shore up some of the topics that were not all that conversed on. In terms of the video for the League of Women Voters that was mentioned, the candidates' forum, Councilmember Goff, was really an interesting experience, none the least of which was, after I gave our presentation in our conversation with the mayors, the emcee saw fit to then posture me as the Mr. Doom and Gloom, but someone who was challenging the economics of the future of Northglenn. So much so that it was represented that in each question to the subsequent group, "Do you agree with Mr. Long that there's going to be a foreclosure on the Justice Center and the Rec Center?" Folks, those are words that were never in my mouth. But again, once more, there are people putting words in my mouth, and I just want to set the record straight. When you watch the video, you can see the subsequent folks that were interviewed after the mayor forum the three of us went through. It's very curious to me, and I don't know how she came up with that impression, but she did carry it forward, and as my wife shared with me, you know, bad publicity is still publicity, so we can live with it. I want to share with you that this leads me into a statement I'm going to make right now. I may not have the, at this stage again, ever again, to make this statement, but I'm going to be talking a little bit about the fact that we're going to have our 2024 budget adoption taking place tonight as one of our resolutions. And I'm going to speak to the fact that I'm having difficulty with it. These are unsettling times, as I shared in the video, as I've shared before in different forums.
Point of order, and this is to protect you, Councilmember Long, I just have a question for our attorney. I just want to make sure that this is not violating, and this is to protect you, Councilmember Long, violating campaign, the Fair Campaign Practices Act. So I just want to check before I let Councilmember Long continue.
At this point, what I hear is Councilmember Long speaking about Council Resolution 140, and so it's up to him whether he does it now or at the time that Council, or Council Resolution 140 is presented.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Long, you wish to continue? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I also have comments at budget, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm also going to bring in some questions forward, and just, for your knowledge, maybe it would be more impactful if we do it together, same time?
Well, we have that opportunity to have that conversation. I'm concerned about that.
So, Councilmember Long, you will have an opportunity during the resolution discussion, or budget adoption, to have more discussion, if you want to save it for them, for that point, I'm sorry. You can do so, and everyone will have a chance to have their discussion at that time.
Okay, I'm just going to take one moment then to have a lead-in, and that is, at the business owners' awards ceremony, I picked up the history of Northglenn. I also found the earlier edition. And from that, I've taken some real thought-provoking, stirring thoughts, which have to do with the fact that Northglenn is my hometown. I want it to succeed. I wanted to see it go forward. I want to see it to continue. And some of the things that I see the founders of this great city develop, I want them to see them carried through. I will be speaking to those points when we get to the resolution on the budget. But that's my lead-in, and I may repeat some of those thoughts. Thank you.
That's fine. You'll have the opportunity to do that. Councilmember Burns, are you ready? I know you're feeding the baby, so it's up to you. If you want to skip it, you can.
Thank you. I think we're as good as we're going to get right now, so we're pretty happy at the moment. But thank you all so much for your patience during this time with me. I am returning to in-person meetings next month, and these two months, being able to remote in and still participate while, like, having a special time with my daughter has been amazing. So I just want to say thank you all so much, and thank you to technology for allowing me to do this, and being so pro-mother in a world that is oftentimes not. I also want to say, building off of that, that, you know, the news this, the last two weeks has really sort of weighed heavy on me, the images that we've been witnessing on the news, the 2,000 dead children in the Middle East has been really upsetting. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who helped write the proclamation, and later the resolution we'll be voting on. The words are really, really beautiful, and thank you all so much. I want to just reiterate and repeat, you know, that hate has no place here in Northglenn, and I am really proud to be on this dais, as we all sort of stand up for our neighbors and our fellow citizens of Northglenn. And I would also just like to point out that, to everyone listening, you know, that one of the best pieces of advice I got from a parenting book, it's called Good Inside by Dr. Becky Kennedy, highly recommend it, is that two things can be true at the same time. So just keep that in mind as we sort of move forward and we choose our words as we speak to each other, that two things can be true, and there's nuance, and history, and pain, and a lot of things going on right now. But I'm very excited to return in person and come back to meetings and come back to events. I'm so upset that I missed the business awards, but right now, I am needed here with this smiley little girl, and I'm so excited to be back next month. So thank you all so much again for everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker had one more update for us.
Miss Shannon, thank you. I forgot to report on the CML had their policy committee meeting. It was down in Denver. I attended virtually. It went pretty much as our legislative policy guide goes. There wasn't really any hiccups, except for the last item where the, I'd call it the board, the CML board, recommended to approve, or recommended to, and I'd say endorse, having the overdose prevention centers, and they were overturned by the body. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Okay, so it is my turn to report. I have been gone the last week. I actually just got back this morning from a memorial in Hawaii, so an overnight flight with a four-hour difference. Y'all forgive me, I might be a little jet-lagged. Before I left, I attended several meetings, one of which was the CML Executive Board meeting, and that recommendation wasn't from the board. We actually just got that recommendation from the policy committee. It's from the lobbyist team. So, to keep it short, the CML Executive Board did vote to approve all of the CML Policy Committee meetings as brought forward, Councilmember Walker. So that's just for your information. Council will get more details on what those pieces of legislation and bills are as they actually go through the process, which is happening very soon here. I attended a business improvement district tour in Cherry Creek, along with Councilmember Condo and our Economic Development Director. And I just want to say that was pretty incredible, especially since we are considering possibly some type of similar model in the Washington Point area. So it was really nice to actually physically walk and hear from their executive director, I guess, the board, I believe I have that title correct, on what Cherry Creek is doing in their business improvement district. As you all know, business is super important to me. I attended a Vail Board interviews. It was the same evening as the candidate forum, so I was rushing back and forth. But we did vote to approve funding for CASA and for the Assistance League of Denver. So $18,000 for CASA to help about 10 Northglenn children, and about $10,000 for these kits that the Assistance League of Denver provides, and it is for victims of abuse, that they give out these kits with toiletries and clothes. It's very sad that this has to exist, but they really do provide a good service. So those were the two fundings that we approved on the Vail Board. I have good news. I've kind of kept it quiet as I was going through the process, but I am officially on the Executive Board for Ralston House. So that is very exciting for me. Yeah, it's an important organization here in Northglenn. I know, Chief. It's near and dear to Chief's heart. It's near and dear to all of our hearts. I have a request for council, and I believe the resident is sitting here in our audience as well. But City Manager Guyer and I did walk over to, not walk over, I guess we drove, and spoke with a resident on Claire Lane concerning some drainage issues that have been going on for a while. So, not to get into too many details, the request is to have staff look into the drainage issues that are going on in Claire Lane, a lot of the sediment and runoff from all of the streets. It's the last stop for the watershed before the waters reach the Niur Canal. So there's a lot of debris and stuff that accumulates there. So the request, short and simple, is to have staff take a look at that. If council is okay to give direction to City Manager Guyer for that.
Absolutely. Has there been any damages reported, or is there any background you can give us on it?
Yeah, I don't think there's been damages, although the water did, like, reach this resident's garage, but the sediment and the rocks wash right into their yard. Like, I saw there's a bunch of dirt and rocks, and it all comes down. And this resident is in his 80s and is constantly having to sweep out the rocks, and I know the city has done a great job of trying to do better about getting in there and sweeping, because it's very hard for a resident to be sweeping our city's streets and trying to get all of these rocks, which I did witness myself. So it's to look at. It's one of those old issues. It's right by Livingston as well, so there's a lot of gathering water. I know it's not an isolated issue right here in Northglenn, but it is an issue that's been going on for a lot of years, and this resident has brought this up many, many years in a row.
Thank you for the background.
Okay, I don't know if City Manager Guyer has anything else to add.
I would just add, to answer Councilmember Walker's question more directly, I'm not aware of any damage to homes being reported. It's not, I would say, it's not exactly like the situation that occurred, has occurred on 111th Place with those homes. Gary Stripling is a longtime resident. He's here in the audience. He's shared his concerns, and there's a low-lying area where staff will evaluate. They'll probably have to look at the entire subdivision, going back to the plating of the subdivision, to really pinpoint what can be done. And so that's why I need council direction and support to do that exercise.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. I won't repeat. I have attended several similar or same events as other council members, so the only thing I would have to add is I attended a traffic calming meeting for Nyad Street, which does qualify for our no need for speed. And so the residents are in the process of choosing which mitigation measures they would like to have happen. That is the end of my communications. City Manager Guyer?
Two items for council this evening. The first is Raising Canes has rescheduled their ribbon cutting to November 14th. They are going... They are going to call Carl's Farm their new home along 120th. So that'll be November 14th, 8:45 a.m. to 10 a.m. Allison Modine, our Director of Economic Development, had shared exciting news that Post Brewing is making strides and they had hoped to do a soft opening ribbon cutting in November. That's not going to happen, so I'm sorry to share that news. We're looking at December as a timeframe. So we will get you a date once we have a date from them. If you have not driven through the marketplace, I highly encourage you to drive through the marketplace because there are signage is on the building. You can see the Bear Garden has come to life. So progress is being made, just not quite there yet. So stay tuned for more information on that soft opening to come in December. The last piece I'll share is a reminder that we'll be hosting, our senior center will be hosting the Veterans Day Celebration on November 11th at 11 a.m. We have the American Legion Post 22, who will be participating. The Colorado Chord Company will be providing music during the luncheon. So we hope you all can attend at the Veterans Memorial here off of Memorial Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Small?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have one quick item regarding the November 7th election. Next week on October 30th, that Monday, Phase One of the voter service and polling centers will be open. At those centers, voters can receive a replacement ballot. They can register to vote. They can use an accessible voting machine to vote on-site, or they can also turn in their voted ballot. Those centers will be open Monday through Friday from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. They'll have hours on Saturday, November 4th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And then extended hours on Election Day, which will be from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. Currently, all of the 24-hour drop-off ballot boxes are open for voters to use. All of the locations for the centers and the drop-off boxes are available online at adamsvotes.com, or there are also links on the city's website that will take you to the county's website. And if any residents have any questions about voting or where their ballot is, the Adams County Election Department's phone number is 720-523-6500. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our City Attorney, Cory.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and members of council. I do not have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. Moving into our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I will close that vote and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we have several resolutions. The first one is CR 137. Joanna, will you please read the title?
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of North Glenn and WJNLLC for the Aquatic Adventure Course Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Amanda Peterson, Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, will provide a summary of the item. Hello, Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This resolution would approve a contract with WJN, who would provide the Ninja Cross Course for the lap pool. And that's the retractable course that we talked about earlier this year with funding coming from a grant from Adams County Open Space, as well as the funding through the Broncos, the sale of the Broncos and those dollars that were distributed back in April of this year. So the base contract is for $385,000 with a contingency of, I believe, $115,000 that would allow for those additional design, the additional design components that we are anticipating to occur once we get that contract in place. The construction or installation really of the piece will take place during the scheduled closure of the pool in 2024, when we do our annual maintenance in the facility. And it will be a two-week closure for 2024 for the pool to allow time for that complete installation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Brown?
I just have a really quick question.
Yes.
What, I mean, the hours, because we're going to be sharing the lap pool, right? Will we be able to keep the Ninja Course open later? So kids that want to participate later will be able to do it like five, six, seven?
So we haven't gone into that level of detail yet. I would expect that over time, there's going to be fluctuation in those schedules, schedule. Wow, English, it's not coming out of my mouth today in that schedule, but it'll change over time. And yes, I would anticipate there's going to be times that'll happen in the evening hours. There's going to be times that'll be on weekends. That's going to change during the summer hours when we have that pool activated during out of out of school hours, when when kids are in the pool during the during the weekday. We still have swim team happening and using actively using those lap lanes in the Monday through Friday in the evenings. We've got active lap swimmers in our early morning hours. So it'll, it's still a shared use pool. And like I said, it will will fluctuate.
I I would just throw a suggestion out that we do Friday nights as all kids, you know, like we used to do that. Do we still do that Friday night thing?
We don't have a dedicated Friday night program, but I think some of our youth commissioners alluded to it. We have a flick and float or dive-in movie that occurs a few times each each season, where we do dedicate the pool to our younger audiences. We don't have a specific age group, but it's definitely geared towards those teen audiences to come in and watch a movie on a Friday night.
Okay, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
I am so excited for this. I think this is going to be great. I used to do a lot of Spartan races and Tough Mudder races, and I just envisioned that something like that over the pool. So maybe I'll go and hang out with the kids and try to beat them or kick my butt. So thank you so much for all your work on this. I'm really excited to see it happen, and I don't think there's any other questions. So that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Please vote.
I will close that vote and CR 137 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to CR 138. Joanna, will you please read the title?
A resolution adopting the City of North Glenn 2024 Pay Plan and 2024 Personnel Summary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have Tamara Dixon, our Director of Human Resources and Chief Diversity Officer, providing a summary of the item. Welcome, Tamara.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Presenting tonight, CR 138, the resolution to adopt our 2024 Pay Plan as well as our 2024 Personnel Summary. If you recall, on August 1st, Graves Consulting presented the draft pay plan, and that included the new pay plan for civilians, as well as the new step plans for our police officers and our sergeants. The memo and the highlighted personnel summary presented include seven positions requested by directors. And those positions, as well as the pay plans and the market movement for civilians and our police officers are included in the overall 2024 budget, which is coming before you for adoption this evening. Staff recommends approval of our 2024 Pay Plan as well as the Personnel Summary, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Long?
Hello.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, thanks. That's so good. But anyway, has nothing to do with you. On page 11, we're looking at the numbers of police officers in the handout that was provided in 138.
Is that the pay plan for?
Page number 11 of 11, the last page.
I'm I'm sorry, I don't have your.
Here, Tamara.
Thank you.
Okay, we go down to police officers.
Okay.
You want mine?
No, I've got it.
I've got it.
I'll go stand with her. It's okay.
Keep that hand up.
63?
Uh huh.
He's referring to the 63.
I don't think he asked this question.
Okay.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, my question is, you've got 63 police officers in the middle of that list. Correct?
Yes.
Out of 101 employees, right?
Yes.
Where are the, where are the investigators in those numbers?
The detectives are included in the police officer.
The detectives are in the police officers.
Correct.
And there's six of them.
Correct.
So help me with the math. 63 minus 6 is 57, correct?
Yes.
No.
That is correct.
Again, here I go again. I'm just trying to discern, maybe the police officer, the the chief's here can help me understand, what is the number of police officers that we're budgeting for?
So.
Not the support staff, those that are on the streets. Excuse me for my interruption.
Yep, six, that would be 63.
We'll have Deputy Chief come up and explain. I think what will be helpful is Deputy Chief can explain the 63, that's the FTE complement.
Correct.
But what we actually have in terms of positions filled, less vacancies. So as you see on pages 10 and 11, there's a breakdown of command staff positions and the officer positions. The items in red are the positions that have shifts have been made. So we're adding a sergeant in 2024. So you see that reflected from eight.
I see the red number, yeah.
To nine. So that's one additional FTE.
And the digital tech.
And then the digital records tech, yeah.
Right.
So you're not going to see the five over-hire positions that counsel has up to this point supported and given direction to staff unless you tell us otherwise. We will move forward as part of this budget process and have five additional over-hires. So you don't see an adjustment of five FTE to that 63 number, because we're not, we're doing it in an over-hire fashion versus an actual addition of the FTEs.
Yeah, we've been over this before and I made a.
So that's why that number is 63 and not 63 plus 5 for 68. Does that help? Deputy Chief can explain the vacancies if you'd like.
I, what I'm looking for is the number. How many are we going to have?
So walk through the whole list.
I'm sorry to have you do this.
Oh, that's okay.
Because when I make statements, I want to make sure I'm with the with the truth.
So current budget for the police department is 101.5 FTE.
Correct.
All right, under the 2023 budget. The 2024 budget will actually have 103.5 FTE. The additional two FTE is one supervising sergeant and one digital technician. Those are the additional FTEs. The five over-hires are separate and distinct from from those numbers. Of our complement of officers and civilian staff, professional staff, it's currently at 23 and a half civilian staff and 78 sworn officers. The 78 sworn officers includes all of command staff, all of investigations, all sworn complement for the entire department. There are seven command staff members. That includes the two lieutenants, myself, the chief, and three commanders. There are currently eight sergeants. That includes the training sergeant. It includes the sixth patrol sergeant, and it includes the supervisor that is overseeing investigations. And the remaining officers then are divvied up between patrol, special positions like community relations officers, school resource officers, and then detectives, investigations. Investigations has actually got 11 investigators when it's fully staffed. Currently, there are seven in position right now, along with two that are assigned to task forces, so nine.
Oh, wonderful. You know, how come we don't, how come we don't hear this until now? Anyway, so how much, what's the total number of command staff?
Seven, including all lieutenants. Three lieutenants, I'm sorry, two lieutenants, three commanders, myself and the chief.
Yeah, I can probably, I should have probably done that myself. Okay. Okay, Deputy Chief, thank you for the information. Much appreciated.
I don't see any other questions. So what we're voting on is adding the FTE to the A Plan, Plan.
And then, and the salary changes.
And the salary changes.
The pay plan.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Other questions? All right, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I will close that vote and CR 138 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tamara. Moving on to CR 139. Joanna, will you please read the title?
A resolution establishing the mill levy of the City of North Glenn, Colorado for the fiscal year 2023, collectible in 2024 for municipal purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have Jason Loveland, interim deputy city manager, providing a summary of the item. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. Again, as was stated, this is to set the mill levy certification for 2023 that's collectible in 2024. The proposal here is the mill levy be set at 11.597 mills. This was first proposed in 1991 and has been the mill levy in the City of North Glenn since that time. A couple of items to note, we received the preliminary assessed valuation on August 25th from Adams and Weld Counties. You can see at the chart below the budget and time implications, that number came in at just over $569 million, which is a 25% increase over 2022's assessed valuation. Revenue generated from the 11.597 mills is just over $6.6 million, of which $4.3 million is for general operating use to support police, roads, snow removal, parks, and whatnot in the general fund. And the remainder, four mills, for $2.2 million, or just under $2.3 million, is restricted for major road and street reconstruction. The impact on a household or any property, we'll say that it's a $500,000 house. The impact on that 11.597 mills is approximately $32 per month. With that, staff recommends approval of CR 139. Happy to answer any questions.
I do not see any questions. Oh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Brown.
For the residents that may be listing, listening, I want to explain, I want you to explain to them what this mill levy is for, because they may have not tuned in for other meetings, and we need to make sure that they're, that they know what this additional, because a lot of our houses did go for over $500,000 in that six-month spurt. So I think it's important to let them know what a mill levy is and what this is.
So the mill levy is the, we'll say, the tax assessment that you pay to Adams County. A portion gets remitted to the city. And the 7.597 mills, as a percentage, comes to the city for general operations. So to include supporting public safety, our roads, our street sweeping, our snow removal, kind of the main areas that are supported by the mill levy, in addition to funding parks and then other general operations. The four mills is a voter-approved restricted mill levy that goes towards supporting road and street reconstruction. So the 120th project found significant support from the four mills. So this is paid for by residents, business owners, property owners within the city that gets directly reinvested into the community.
Thank you for sharing that. Great question. Councilmember Long?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
25%. This is what we're putting in our budget, right? This 25% increase? That's reflected in the property taxes income on the income side of things?
Yes.
And we're certain it's going to be 25%?
There may be changes from the preliminary assessed valuation to what is provided from the county on December 10th.
So what we're approving this evening is the mill levy, no matter what that thing is, this is our mill levy against that assessment.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So your estimation of 25%, you know, on a good day, it might be 30%. On a bad day, it might be 20%. Fair statement?
This information has been provided by the assessor, so it will be a.
This is what the assessor's giving you?
This is what the assessor has provided.
Okay, okay.
Yep, so it's not, it's not an estimate from Jason.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jason. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving into CR one.
Sorry.
Oops, sorry.
I'll close that real quick and CR one thirty-nine passes unanimously.
It's the jet lag, man. Moving on to CR one forty, Joanna, will you please read the title?
A resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-four budget of the city of North Glenn, Colorado and appropriating the sums set forth therein.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, a motion to approve.
Second.
Great. Jason, just come on back.
All right. Well, excited night to consider, uh, the adoption of the twenty-twenty-four annual operating capital improvement, uh, budget pursuant to the city charter. Uh, so, really, the budget is the document that identifies the allocation of resources, uh, in order to provide oper-, you know, the operations and the services to meet the need of the community. This year, uh, the budget, uh, really kicked off, uh, maybe on May thirteenth when we held, uh, strategic planning session, uh, followed by meetings, August seventh, the twenty-first, September eleventh, and then a public hearing, uh, on October ninth. So, uh, we've had a handful of opportunities to speak to the budget. Uh, and with the collective efforts of city staff, you know, bringing forward, uh, recommendations, and then the effort of council, uh, hearing and considering, uh, those recommendations and providing input and feedback, uh, we've come to, uh, tonight's meeting, uh, with the, the proposed, uh, adoption. So, overall, I won't read fund by fund, uh, but overall, uh, this budget, uh, for twenty-twenty-four, uh, that's being proposed is sixty-eight million, nine hundred, three thousand, two hundred, sixty-five dollars. And that is across, uh, all of our funds, uh, with, uh, thirty-seven point nine million, uh, being, uh, in the, in the general fund, uh, which does support, you know, a majority of operations, uh, to include public safety, uh, roads and parks. With that, we've heard several presentations and comments about this budget, uh, so I will leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions and staff recommends approval.
Any questions? This is your chance to discuss.
With all due respect, I think I'm gonna wait until the others have had a chance to speak. I mean, because I don't want to dominate the conversation.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Brown.
Um, I have a couple of problems that I have expressed, um, throughout the process of the budget. They're, um, what I feel, I just want to speak to them for a minute, get it out one more time. Our expenses, that are not necessary at this time. I am speaking directly to the three, um, employee events that came through HR. Um, I complained about them, I mentioned them at the beginning, I realize it's a drop in the bucket, but, um, as councilmember Long has stated, you know, we're at a point where we have to take a step back, right? Um, and I think that, that unfortunately, we're gonna come to a time, and this may be it, where we have to say, we love you, we're continuing to give you raises, but these events, as they come up, and I can tell you the one that really bothers me the most is the book club. And the, the other one is, um, the one that, I guess I have more. Um, Northland, Northland fourteen brought forward. We offer so many events within the city that have a cultural basis, right? And we invite every employee to come. We, I'm not sure, but I think we give feed ti-, food tickets to all these for all of our, um, all of our employees who volunteer and things like that. I don't understand why we're gonna budget for a cultural event that excludes the community when all of our other ones include the community. So, I want to make sure those two things come out. Um, my other two really big concerns, and I know you're gonna tell me that we can just appropriate the funds. We have two very large expenses that have come to council in the last couple of weeks, and they're huge. You add them together and there's a million dollars. We obviously don't have that budgeted for. So, in my mind, I've been looking through things and it looks like the only way we're gonna be able to do that is either appropriate from the two thousand twenty-three budget or again, go into an appropriation of the two thousand twenty-four budget, knowing very well that we're gonna have to pay that money upfront. And then possibly whatever happens in the background, we may get it back, we may not get it back. I don't feel like we have addressed those two issues at all. It, you know, it's like the monkey on my back right now because it's, it's a lot of money. And, um, just finding out about it in the last month and a half, I think, um, it bothers me to go ahead and approve a budget, knowing that we're gonna already have to do an appropriation, well, the next council will always already have to do an appropriation on an item that we as council already know that is looming over our shoulders. So, those are my issues. Um, I understand that, um, I'm being a little harsh or not as easygoing with the human resources request, but there's a reason for it. Um, but I have deep concern that we're not addressing these two monetary issues going into the two thousand twenty-four budget and just going to rely on appropriation. Is that your, um, is that the approach that you would be taking in this situation?
Jason, do you want me to?
Well, making the, uh, so, I think that at any time council can make amendments.
Little louder.
At any time council can make recommendations or amendments to the budget. Uh, so if there is something that is on council's mind that needs to be added or whatnot, um, that, that is able to happen at council, uh, this is council, this is council's budget.
I understand that, but we have already looked at one that's five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, um, that's just one of them, okay? So, how come we're not, rather than doing an appropriation later on with a new council and yada, 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 why are we not discussing how this is gonna affect the two thousand twenty-three budget? Because when you come down, we're gonna reduce the general fund, right? When that gets appropriated over, the general fund will be reduced again. And when we look at our budget, we're looking at where the general fund falls into place with our budget. So, I, I do have concerns that we knew about these things, um, before the budget process was completed and we didn't make any attempt to budget them in. You know, if I knew, well, if I had known that Excel was gonna charge me six hundred dollars for my public service bill, I would have budgeted extra money in my budget, that's how I'm gonna put it, right? But in my mind, right now, we're just trying, here's how I feel. We're just trying to approve this budget, no, I'm not, because I've been here so long, knowing that we're gonna appropriate that money from the general fund. And it, it, this is the first time in eight years that it's not sitting right with me because we've never had an overhead projects of, of that amount, those magnitudes, come at us after budget's done, right? We've never, we've never experienced it that I can remember, can you? Yeah. I, I, I just.
What, five hundred thousand dollars are you talking about?
The, the, um, foundation at the Justice Center?
Oh.
And then the other foundation issue that we have. So, and I really hope I just didn't.
I think a piece of that is, one, the timing of when it came in, and then, two, uh, the fact that there are phases to that project. And so, it is unclear, there is uncertainty from everyone of how much, um, how much of that, you know, kind of top-level dollar amount will actually need to be done. And so, there is some uncertainty there, and so rather than come forward to say, hey, let's amend this budget right now, given that uncertainty, um, really the decision is to be made to, to step it in and, and see where ultimately, you know, that project goes.
I apologize to my fe-, my fellow council members, but I have one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
We already know the one we're paying five hundred and twenty thousand dollars out for, okay? So, we are, we already know that's gonna happen and we're gonna have to do that, and Cory, stop me if I go too far. We're gonna have to do that one until a decision is made, right? Um, I understand what you're saying is that there may be separate, you know, separate steps, there may be less that we have to pay, but don't we still have a fiduciary? No, it's not coming to me.
Duty.
Thank you, a fiduciary duty to save that, save some of that money, capture some of that money? Thank you. And hold on to it, um, it just, it really bothers me. And then I'd like to ask you, if you have gone so far as to look at paying out, just top line, right? What we have as estimates on those two projects, what does that do to our general fund? And then I'd like, you know, I know the vote is tonight, I get that. But, um, and then if the two percent doesn't pass, um, in November, you know, uh, those are, it's just a large expense that I've never experienced at the last minute on council when we had an opportunity to maybe take a step back and go, are we doing the right thing?
So, one of the elements is, um, that we do have reserves available, you know, to, to fund a one-time, you know, situation or project, uh, like this. Uh, so that is a consideration. I don't have the math at the top of my head of what that, if that, uh, what that change to fund balance is. Uh, so that is one consideration of, uh, knowing that there are, there is and will be funding available for those projects, uh, that may just not come from a one-time budget amendment, uh, at this time, so.
I understand and I, I, I have trusted you for eight years, you know what I mean? But these two items just really bother me in the fact that we're not, um, addressing them prior to the budget. You know, prior to, I know we've had the hearing, I know we've done all that, and, you know, um, it's over a million dollars, and I just really felt like it should have been addressed in this budget.
Mayor Protem.
See.
Um, I'd, I'd like to add just a, an overall context for what the purpose of tonight is. It is the adoption of the budget. Um, council really has, um, tonight, as well as meetings moving forward. If council's not comfortable adopting the budget tonight, and I'm not trying to jump ahead, but I'm sensing the concern by councilmember Brown that she's expressing. Tonight is another opportunity to have a discussion about what is included in the proposed budget. Up until this evening, we have not been given direction to take anything out of the proposed budget but for the request to add in, um, I believe, five hundred dollars for the youth commission, which was done. So, the budget process is, is a continual dialogue of adding, subtracting, and making sure the budget's in a position that come, council is comfortable adopting based on majority vote. Um, if, so, based on the comments tonight, if you want to have something subtracted, so for example, um, councilmember Brown, you expressed concern about the HR events. Tonight is the evening where you can say, I would like to request these, um, this funding for these events be removed from the budget. I would have preferred as manager to have heard that prior to tonight, but I'm using that as an example because it's a continual process and tonight we're at the adoption. If, um, council votes the budget down tonight, we will need to bring the budget back for discussion and council's going to need to provide Jason and I very specific direction as to what needs to change. So, when Jason expressed that the timing of those significant capital expenditures came about, he was correct. Those were not known expenditures at the beginning of this budget process, otherwise it would have looked different. However, there is a comfort level, probably more so on the staff level at this point, that we can make adjustments, we can flex and adapt, wh-, if and when we need to. So, um, we've talked a lot about the, the capital budget concerns that you've brought up, councilmember Brown. We've also talked about Prop HH in the past. We won't know what the impact of that is until after the November seventh election. Adjustments can be made to the budget. So, I'd really, Jason and I need to hear from council this evening. What do you want added, if anything, what do you want subtracted? And then are you in a position to adopt the budget this evening? If not, um, then we'll have to reschedule it for a date in November.
Thank you for that clarification, city manager Guyer, because I was going to ask that. Even if the budget is adopted tonight, there is the opportunity to amend that at any point.
Absolutely.
Anyway, moving forward. Councilmember Brown, did that answer your questions for now? Should we just circle back around?
I mean, it circled.
Okay.
Circled around the fire, but.
I have, I have lots of hands up, so, uh, councilmember Walker.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Jason, no question for you, I'm just gonna, excuse me, uh, echo councilmember Brown that I do not support the, uh, the three HR events. And while they, they, I don't have the exact number for any of it, it is just south of twenty thousand dollars and out of a almost sixty-nine million dollar budget, it is a drop in the bucket. Uh, but to most of our residents, twenty thousand dollars is quite a bit of money, especially when it ex-, excludes almost all of our residents, except for the very few who might happen to be employees. And so, that is my, that is my objection that was noted earlier, and I maintain that objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, we've had this, discussions about this, and I think if I'm remembering it right, when some of these objections were raised, there was not a majority to, you know, change things at that point. So, um, I mean, I'm happy to listen to people's discussions about this. Um, I think I'm perfectly fine voting to support this budget and don't, you know, go around and see what everyone else has to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Thank you. Mayor. This is a difficult time. Councilmember Brown said it eloquently. However, my statements are multiple of her concerns. We talked about all of the celebrations that we have in our city. And I pointed out, you said three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then you gave a swag number of three hundred thousand. So, then we came up with six hundred and twelve thousand. And I, at the time, I remember being at the podium and, and asking you, it could easily be eight hundred thousand. You still don't have that number. It's still not a finite number that I understand. Number one. Number two, there's nothing in here that I really see addresses some of the maintenance concerns that we have with just our buildings and our operations. Funded depreciation, not a, not a concern, nothing out there. What do we do? We'll take it from the general fund when we need to. So, starting off, the first thing I'll share with you is, I got my budget here. I've made more changes and ups and downs and backwards and forwards, especially the general fund number. And I, I'll share this one right now. This was the handout we got, that I got, that's on everybody's computer. If you look at page, uh, twenty-four, where we have a total of debt service of five point six million dollars, when you add up the numbers that appear elsewhere in the document on page five, that number is five point five million dollars, not five point six million dollars. The delta is eighty-four thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, to you, it may not seem like much, but if we've got people watching us right now out there, our hard-working taxpayers, upon whose backs this money is being used by the city to run our city the way our forefathers, our founders wanted us to run, which was a balanced budget, zero-based budget. This is not a balanced budget, contrary to what the mayor said at one of the meetings. She said it's a balanced budget. The only way it's a balanced budget is if you draw from the general fund reserves, which we're saying we're drawing down. The next five years, on your projections, Jason, showed we're losing money five years straight out. In the fifth year, it gets egregious, or the, actually the fourth year, because we dropped below the twenty-five percent maximum that we've said we'd never go below when it comes to general fund reserves. That's what we come to. So, my statement to you, thank you for letting me speak my piece, is we have operational losses for the next five years, starting this next year. We have general fund depletions. The debt service manipulations are never the same numbers when I go through it. It's always different, it's always changing. And I think you're saying that the city, new city hall is totally taken care of with all of our. And I think you're saying that the city, new city hall is totally taken care of with all of our monies. We won't have to draw anything more, but nothing's been projected in terms of what the maintenance is gonna be on a net-zero facility. Walking around, the superintendent tonight, I asked him, you know, and he said, well, this might take some time, take some time to figure out what that's gonna cost. I don't see that anywhere in here. We don't, in my walking around, thanks to Councilman Kondo taking us on tours of the waterworks and the water treatment center, I, I came away with a sinking heart. We have an aging infrastructure. I know we're keeping it up, granted, but in two to three years, we're gonna have to find millions of dollars to bring those up to speed. Again, that's a concern, especially when we're operating for five years out of loss, taking down general funds, reserves. How much will we have left? And I don't know what's gonna happen with our half point coming up that, that ends in 2025. And with all due respect, again, I keep coming back to it, and I don't wanna, I know I sound like a broken record, but I really respectfully don't mean to do this, but and I know I'm probably speaking mostly to myself with this, but I'm concerned with the police. I'm very concerned with their staffing, with their numbers. And if you're, unless you're putting your head in the sand like an ostrich out there, when you see what's happening at our southern border, those people are bubbling upwards. They're gonna go northwards. They're gonna come to Colorado. They're working their way into Arizona right now. Not to tell a personal story, but my little granddaughter in Phoenix just got threatened last week. We don't know what to do about it. What I'm sharing with you, as I see it happening, and I think these police officers are keeping things close to the vest because they don't wanna scare our people, but we have car thefts like nobody else in the whole state of Colorado. And you heard me give my FBI report on a scale of 1 to 100 worth 3 with a city our size. But this seems to be not of any real concern around here. Again, I'm concerned with that. And I really sincerely believe that we have misplaced priorities. We have a misapplication of precious taxpayer dollars. I believe that wholeheartedly. I'm concerned. And, um, you can probably guess what my vote's gonna be on this proposition tonight. If we could postpone it, and as I suggested earlier, have a retreat somewhere or somehow, to have an open dialogue on all of this, to make sure we're back on track. Councilwoman Brown made a great statement. I mean, but we've got more on those follow-ups. That's my concern, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. So, there are a couple of unknowns coming up on November 7.
You said Walker.
I'm sorry, Walker. Long. Councilmember Long. Um, like I said, jet lag is setting in a little bit, so. Again, going back to what City Manager Guyer stated, and Corey's welcome to jump in. If we adopt the budget tonight, there is always the opportunity to bring back amendments, especially, especially once we know what the outcome of November 7th will be. I know we've had many opportunities. I hear everybody's concerns. We've had many opportunities to discuss this, to bring up the objections, the concerns. And we've all seen the future forecast that all of us have, uh, have voiced, that we know we need to keep an eye on. For some of the things that are being brought up, that were brought forward by staff, we have to remember that they were brought forward by staff for a reason. And maybe next budget year is, is an opportunity to have discussions on how those items are going. I understand, I understand the amounts are maybe concerning, but we also have to think about the employees that work for the city that keep the city running. And so I know that it was brought forward by staff because these were, um, I don't know, events or ideas to kind of continue to build and that connection and retention of employees. And again, this is my business mind, knowing that you have to do tho- those types of things. There are employees that work here for the city. If they all quit, the city is in trouble. It takes a lot more money to replace a staff member than it does to keep the staff members you have. With that being said, we all understand that there are, you know, future foring, forward looks that we have to keep in mind, and I think we can do that. I think we all share concerns that, uh, with the staffing of our police department as well. And we've had these discussions many times, but I believe all of us are in support and making sure that that happens. Um, I do have more hands that have just gone up, so I will allow everyone to have at least another opportunity to talk a little bit more about how they feel about the budget. So, um, we haven't heard from Megan, Councilmember Burns. I'm gonna ask you to go first, please.
Thank you. Um, I finally got Ellie down. She, no offense, Jason doesn't find the budget very exciting, I guess. I, thank you so much for speaking up, Mayor Protem, about those concerns, and everyone else on the dais as well, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Long. I, my point of view right now is, we have an excellent staff that worked really hard on this budget. And while we have things that have come up during this process, I do think that if we have the chance to sort of like move forward and iterate and pivot, that is the best, best path forward versus like restarting things over again. You know, as the Great Friends episode says, you know, pivot, pivot, pivot. And I think if we have a more agile frame of mind, moving forward is better. I also would like to say that, you know, there's concerns about costs for the events of the city, and I, I do think that a healthy city helps build community. And in a healthy city where we care about our neighbors, care about each other, we'll see less crime. Also, a lot of people from outside of the city come to our events, like the food truck carnival and pirate festival, and spend money at our businesses here, which gives us tax revenue. So that's something that we haven't talked about, is the offset of those costs of what money we're making in our sort of notoriety. And maybe some people are like, oh, like, I wanna move to Northland. I love that they have, they have these community events. And I agree that, you know, burnout, I think, has been a big theme for me during my time here on city council, both at the staff level. You know, that includes the police and city staff, and I would love to put a focus on 2024 of alleviating that, um, in any way, shape, or form. And I trust wholeheartedly in the plan that Chief has put together, and he, I believe, knows what's best for his team. And I'm putting my faith and trust in him as well, and all of the directors of their department. So anyway, that's my two cents and sort of like my point of view of why I think we should vote to adopt, and then move forward and pivot and make changes as we see fit, because I think there's going to be a lot of uncertainties, not just from November 7th election, but what's going on globally and that sort of thing. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Burns. Um, see who has not had a chance to speak yet. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So question for, uh, City Manager probably, or, or Deputy interim City Manager. So what are the implications if we do not approve a budget tonight? Are we in violation of any state mandated deadlines? Or, so from a regulatory as well as from an operational perspective?
So the requirement is to adopt the budget by December 31st for 2024. And if we do not adopt a budget, the 2023 budget.
2023. You said December 31st, 2024.
Oh, yeah.
We wanna do it this year.
Let's do it this year, by the end of the year.
I'm just being.
If that's not adopted.
I didn't say anything.
If that's not adopted, the 2023 budget will continue, uh, as the budget.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, and then from an operational perspective, does it impact the city at all if we do decide to revisit this in two weeks?
It does, um, in a couple of ways. Um, the first would be council approve the compensation plan for, um, 2024, and that plan is tied to the operating budget. Well, the budget as a whole. And so I'll need to put any type of implementation of pay increases on hold. Um, that will put us behind schedule. Um, we're set to implement, um, compensation reports for all employees early December. Um, the, the market increases are set to go into pay, um, effective December 16th, so that will affect all of that work. Um, I won't be able to say, yes, do this, staff, Jason, Tamara, and her staff, until I have an adopted budget for 2024.
Okay, understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Kondo. Um, yeah, so my concerns is that we are gonna hold up our process that we've had the opportunity to discuss many times. And we still, again, not to sound like a broken record, have the option to amend it after it's adopted so that the city can continue to function. And we can bring back any issues that are not approved or require further discussion for council. Councilmember Hata Miu, haven't heard from you yet. Would love to hear what your thoughts are on this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, just listening to, uh, all of my colleagues here on the dais, I, uh, I'd like to, you know, if you could, um, Councilmember Long, you know, just, if there, if there are some, you know, I know you have some strong thoughts about some items here. Uh, if you can, you know, provide them to us, you know, I'd like to just know, what is the monetary amount that you'd like to see taken away? I, cause I don't know, if it's $20,000, I don't feel like that's enough to put the city on hold for, for that. I mean, I just wanna know, like, is it gonna really be an impact on, you know, the, uh, unexpected expenses that we have? I, I just wanna know how much money you, we would be going if we run with.
Councilmember Hata Miu, he has his hand up too, so he'll probably speak right after you.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the question I have. So that's just what, what's been, uh, I've been thinking about. Um, I do wanna make sure we do take care of employees. Um, I've been an employee for another municipality for a numerous, numerous amount of years, and take care of your employees. They'll take care of you, so, um, I just wanna know know where, you know, I know you've, you have your notes and everything. I just wanna make sure you have your, your time to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hata Miu. Councilmember Long?
Okay, thank you. First off, um, if we had a zero-based budget, that would be great. Operate to break even, whatever that would take without going into the general fund. That would be my line in the sand, if that could be at all possible. And you go back and you look at everything. Number one, I'm gonna share this. Everything I said, if you noticed, again, words in my mouth. I never once said anything about personnel. I said nothing about the new steps and grades and increases we're expecting for all of our employees. And Councilwoman Burns mentioned the idea to pivot. Could we not pivot and make an exception and take care of our people? And still come back and have a balanced budget worked out? Maybe make a special assessment for Budget 2023 to cover the needs we're gonna have to take care of our personnels as they move into the new year? Again, I'm thinking out of the box here. Instead of being in the stricture of where you are, is there something that you couldn't do to make an exception for the personnel? That's where I'm coming from. Number two, this is not a restart. My goodness, we don't wanna start over. We spent a lot of time looking at this. And as, just to say it one more time, Councilwoman Brown said it earlier, this is a fiduciary duty that we have to do the right thing. We're the policymakers on this dais. Yes, we found conversations. And the city sta- city staff, they're skilled subject matter experts. And again, just to say it on this, as an aside, I think we've put too much on them. I think that many of these agenda items that we look at and painstakingly go through and, and look at all this administrivia could better be handled by them instead of us taking this time. We've got higher-level things that we need to be considering. And again, just to reiterate, this has nothing whatever to do with personnel. I think that we could take a harder look at the events and have a more detailed number for those, instead of the three and a quarter plus 300, let's call it 612, or whatever we came up with. I mean, I'm just sharing with you some of the places we get cut. And when it comes to, excuse me for that, the, um, the events, the money that's made on the events is peanuts when we're looking at millions of toddlers, folks.
I have a few more hands up, so.
I'll stop there.
Councilmember Goff.
Mayor Protem, I'm, I'm, we've gone, gone around and around about these topics, and I just, my recollection of all the discussions we've had up to this point that several people on the dais have had, uh, concerns or problems with this item, or that line item, or this event, or that event. But in none of the discussions have we come to any, a majority decision to get rid of any of the items on the budget. So I understand that some people are, you know, I mean, may end up still being unhappy with the final decision, but I think that this point, we should vote, um, and, and be prepared to make changes in the future or adapt in whatever way we need to adapt. But, um, as I said before, I'm gonna vote yes, and I, whatever we decide to do, we just, I think we, it's about time to to vote.
We still have a couple more hands.
Yes, that's fine.
Speak, and make sure that they get their ideas out, um, and before we go to a vote here. So, let's wrap it up. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam, Mayor Protem. So Councilmember Long, you're, just so that I can make sure I, I'm understanding where you're going here is, and I'm looking at page seven of the packet, is that you're not comfortable with the 261, uh, bogey, 261,000 bogey here, reduction in fund balance. So that represents about, what, 7% of the budget? So, uh, where do you wanna take that out of? Do you wanna take it out of purchase services, which is at present 6.9 million? And can you, you know, if you're, if you want to have zero there on the net change fund balance, where do you want it to come out of? Yeah, I'm on page 11. Expenditures, general fund? Page seven. You're on wastewater fund.
Well, I was on seven.
Page seven. Did I say word? Page seven. Pardon me.
It's not showing what it did before.
So, can you just rotate your display there, Protem? Thank you.
I feel like Councilmember Long has said multiple times what he wants.
So are you saying that you would like to see the fund balance instead of being minus 261K? Be zero. And if so, where do you wanna take it out of?
I don't know where you're getting 261, cause I see a whole lot more than that in my, in these prior presentations, so I don't know where that's.
This is the current iteration of CR 140.
And I'll call your attention to something else. As long as, is it okay to have this conversation?
Um, usually we take turns instead of having conversations with each other on the dais, so that'd be the better protocol.
You don't have an open dialogue.
No, go, go ahead. You can, if, Councilmember Kondo, are you done with your piece?
I am done.
I wanna let you finish up.
I have said my piece.
Okay, Councilmember Long, please feel free.
Okay, if you look at this page you just cited here, um, you look at the 2022 actual on the bottom, ending fund balance is what? 15.4 million, correct? But the beginning fund balance in 2023 should be the 15.4, but oops, no, it's 13.9. And, cause, because when you come to the bottom of a 2023 budget with the ending fund balance of 12,382, that happens to be exactly the 2024 proposed budget at 12,382. So the ending fund balance of 23 is the new beginning fund balance for 24. Uh, Jason has spoken to this before, but mysteriously, there's a slide here of $2.5 million. Where did that go? And how much are we really taking out of the fund balance? We're taking out $1.5 million out of the fund balance, right? For 2023 budget. We did that already, right? That's already been taken out?
So, so that is what the, that is what the adopted budget is currently in 2023, is to use $1.6 million of fund balance. And the 2024 proposed budget is to use 200. And the 2024 proposed budget is to use $261,000 of fund balance.
With all due respect, Councilman Condo, it's not just about the general fund balance, though it's important if we have that as a zero. If you take a look at all of the revenues and all of the expenses, you're still losing money as projected for five years.
Jason, do you have anything to add to that? Any point of clarification? I think you've explained it before.
No, I think that, you know, those forecasts are to be conservative in nature and really to point out that there's decisions that need to be made, opportunities to not be wasted on revenues as opportunities arise. And then really having that picture of here's a plan, a staffing plan, a historic plan based off of data that we have. And we may come to a place at times, year after year, that we do have to have collaborative conversations, which is what a budget is, right, to really identify and focus on priorities of the community. And really, that's just an illustrative point to make on those long-term forecasts to say, hey, we will have to have conversations on an annual basis. There isn't just some random money tree that makes everything that the community wants and that the council and staff want to deliver possible. So I think it's more taking a realistic approach to, you know, to the hard work that is really the annual budget process and to not lose sight of that. So.
Okay, well, at some point, we do need to vote because we don't want to hold up the city's ability to continue to work. So the option is still out there that if we adopt the budget, we can put forth an amendment if there's anything that anyone feels strongly about. Who's in support of passing this budget with the possibility of future amendments? Can I see your hands?
My hand is raised.
Okay. Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote. Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
I will close that vote and CR 140 passes with three no votes cast by Councilmembers Brown, Walker, and Long. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for that discussion. That was very difficult, but we still have the option to put forth an amendment if so need. Moving on to CR 141. Joanna, will you please read the title?
A resolution approving the Fifth Amendment to the employment agreement between the City of Northland and Heather M. Geyer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And City Manager Geyer, this discussion for you?
I have no formal presentation. This contract amendment is being brought forward based on the evaluation score that I received recently. It also has a second amendment piece that's necessary to capture the market that would be, that was approved through passage of the 2024 budget this evening. So the 2% merit is consistent with what all employees receive, civilian employees, that is, as well as the market. Thank you.
Thank you. So we all had our discussions and agreed that City Manager Geyer deserves her merit. So is there any further discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
I will close that vote and CR 141 passes unanimously.
Thank you. CR 143. Joanna, will you please read the title?
A resolution supporting Israel and condemning the unprovoked and unjustified war launched by the Hamas terrorist organization against Israel.
Thank you, Councilmember Long.
Second, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Corey Hoffman will be talking to us.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem, members of council. I did want to identify what this resolution is and what it is not in terms of a point in time. So on October 9th, you gave me direction to draft this resolution. This resolution is targeted at what you directed, which is to condemn the Hamas terrorist organization and support the state of Israel. And so that is what, how this is drafted. And just so council is aware in terms of sort of how I put this together, because I am a local government attorney. And so this was frankly, a little bit outside of my norm. But I did a lot of research, both in terms of what the United States foreign policy is. This reflects the 99 to 0 resolution of the United States Senate. It also reflects what a lot of other local governments are doing across the country. But it is targeted as against the Hamas terrorist organization and supporting the state of Israel. So that is how it was drafted. I've had conversations with some of you, not all of you. But I wanted to make sure that council as a whole understood how this was put together based on your direction. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Can I make a comment without finding my hand? You know, I keep all these different windows open. Councilmember Brown?
Mr. Hoffman, this is beautiful. I support it 100%. I have no idea why I'm so emotional tonight, but I do support it 100%. Scares me. And I think that you did a wonderful job. And I appreciate the extra thought and symbolism that went into this because I support it 100%. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Walker for requesting it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Councilmember Long?
Corey, on a personal note, this is wonderfully written.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hand, so I just want to say thank you as well. It is very well-written. It's very heartbreaking what's happening. We've all seen it. We know. And it's devastating. It's devastating what the people of Israel are going through in this terrorist organization. So thank you for doing that.
Mayor Protem, can I ask one more question? Just procedural. Sure.
Because this was done as a resolution versus a proclamation, it will never be read to our residents in this format? Is that?
That is correct. This was done a little differently. And I would specifically identify section two of the resolution because it was also, and I took this from what other local governments had done that have done something similar, is to transmit it to the state of Colorado's congressional delegation. So it's really kind of a different mechanism.
Thank you very much for pointing that out for me. I must have skimmed right over it and I apologize for bothering you.
She does read like proclamation.
Well, that brings up a good point. Is the proclamation going to show anywhere in the connection presentation? It will, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, why don't you come forward? It wouldn't be in the connection. Well, a summary, just the summary, but not the full proclamation.
Actually, the full proclamation gets put on social media. So we always put proclamations up with the photo. The connection will have the title. And actually, I recommended that we use that as our pull-out in the lead recap this month. So it will be there. And I also have a proposal from our new events specialist, Rachel, that we do a board at Noel Northland asking people for points of light. And we actually thought the proclamation and the resolution would be a great thing to put there of things we're thinking about positively, positive thoughts we're trying to send out. They thought that would be a good one to kind of be a centerpiece and invite other people to put up their well wishes during the holiday season on note cards on that board. So those are the things that we have planned in communications. Other questions?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Just the proclamation, not the resolution?
For which?
In the connection.
Both are mentioned in the connection. We'll just have a pull-out box that kind of has a summary of council took this action in both the resolution and a proclamation. And the picture would be of the proclamation, because that's what I took a picture of.
Great.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
I will close that vote and CR 143 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment. Statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments must be related to an item previously addressed by council during the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to council at this time? Okay. Please step forward. Step forward, state your name and address. Oh, oh, yes. That's okay. Just state your name and address or ward and provide your comments.
Yeah, my name is Brandy. I'm 1026, West Main Avenue, Ward 4. And I just wanted to say, I like these movies. I really like them. I like these movies. I like them a lot. What I don't like, I mean, it is, but what I don't like to see is, I know that you guys aren't all skipping down the road and holding meetings together, and I get that. We don't even have to like each other. But as a resident, I really like to see more, I hear what you're saying, less, I don't like what you're saying. You know what I mean? Like kind of a, just more positive, happy, including everybody. Because everybody does work hard and everybody has their specialty here in this, in the city of this building. That's awesome. But professionals and that specialty don't reflect on an audience member or a resident sitting up here. All that reflects on me. And it's like, you know, like when you're upset, and I get it, and I've got other people. But when you're upset and you don't like what somebody has said, I'd rather hear, hey, you know what? I heard what you said. We can talk about it later or would you consider like, you know, maybe email together so we can all agree and see it from both points of view? Because it's hard, because you're a math person, he's a math person. Let me tell you who's not a math person. You know what I mean? So I, and I get it, because it's hard to understand. And I cornered Jason. I was like, blah, blah, blah. And he's like, yeah, where are you from? And I'm like, blah, blah. So I get it. It's just I, as the resident, would like to see a working camaraderie. When you guys just said, you're standing with me up there, you're standing up for, everybody else is getting used to you here, do you know?
Yeah.
But I do love these scenes. Love these scenes.
Well, we appreciate your call. My sense of humor and my email. Yeah, I got you, sister.
Oh, and, oh, this is a question, a statement about the Ward 4 meeting. Where is the Justice Center?
The Justice Center is on Community Center Drive.
It's that big building that overlooks 24.
It's on the street. Yes, it's the police station. Thank you so much, Brandy. Appreciate it.
Brandy, we love seeing you out there too.
I don't see anyone else in the audience that is here, still here. So thank you, Brandy, for holding out. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council at this time? I do not see anyone on the phone. They're all sleeping. All right. There being no further business, we are adjourned. Good night.